Good morning, everyone. For those who are standing in the back, there is really no need to do that unless you prefer to stand. There are seats in the front and scattered out through maybe the first third of the hall here. So please come forward and take your seats if you want to be closer. And thank you all for coming. This is kind of a chilly morning and there is obviously an enormous amount of uncertainty in the air. And it's quite apparent that that fuels your concern, both for your personal circumstances, but in a larger sense, and I know this is true of so many, many people here, your larger sense for the well-being of the university. So thank you for that concern. I'm Dave Frommeyer. I'm president of the University of Oregon. It's been my privilege to serve in that regard for now a number of years. I think you all know that the transition has been successfully arranged and Richard LaRiviere was on the campus last week and will visit us at least twice more before he assumes his official duties on July 1st. But obviously prior to that time, because the session of the legislature is in full swing and so many things are happening, a town hall meeting of this kind is, I think, very useful for our campus and we deeply appreciate, as I say, the attentiveness and the engagement of so many people. I'm accompanied here, and this is really for the purpose of answering what we think may be your concerns most effectively, by Provost Jim Bean, by University General Counsel Melinda Greer, and by Vice President for Administration and Finance Frances Dyke. To facilitate questions that you may have, there are of course microphones that are here, but should you wish to have a question asked and you may not wish to do it personally, we do have people who are distributing pieces of paper on which you can write your question, try to do it legibly and try to make it simple rather than a compound question. And please, let's all try to avoid speeches in the effort to get as many questions responded to as possible. And we've asked incoming Senate President Peter Gilkey, who is currently the president of the inter-institutional faculty senate and a professor of mathematics, to be one of the persons who will be, if you don't mind Professor Gilkey, a runner, to snag these questions, as well as Executive Assistant President Dave Huben. So as questions occur to you, please feel free to hand them to one of these two gentlemen if you prefer that as the way of disposing of them. If in the event that our time allotted this morning is not adequate, we will take the questions, try to group them, and respond in some electronic way to them so that there's not a question that goes unanswered that may be on your minds, or at least on the minds of some of you. So again, thank you for coming. Let me make some brief introductory remarks and then turn it over to Provost Bean. I think most of you saw the headlines in the paper today of unemployment in Oregon that is now north of 12 percent, if not the highest in the nation. That clearly is one of the highest unemployment outrates in the nation. It's come to us late and suddenly, which means that the state's revenues, which are unusually income tax sensitive compared to many states, will reflect this loss on down the line rather than having reflected it immediately. Said another way, when the Department of Revenue in Oregon starts opening up those tax returns on April 16th, two days from now, it's likely to show a catastrophic loss of state revenue. That will lead to a state revenue forecast, which will be only the most recent of many. Each one of them has been bleaker than the one before it. That revenue forecast is due on May 15th. It is a tradition in the Oregon Legislature, and I'm sure you understand exactly why, that final budgeting, at least the big serious budgets for the state, are not even really allotted until after the May revenue forecast at the very least has been received. And so we do exist in a period of uncertainty that is simply unavoidable. We will do the very best that we can to cushion that uncertainty with the knowledge that we know and when we know it, and give that to you. I was in Salem all day yesterday, meeting with members of the Legislative Assembly from both parties in both houses. They reflect the uncertainty that we are trying to give you today, but we will tell you those things that we do know in an effort to give our best guess as to where we are. I think a basic thing to remember, of course, is that 80 percent of a budget of an institution such as ours is in personnel costs. The costs of administration are by any peer comparison low at this university compared to our peers. A state system study showed that ours was approximately 38 percent of what a comparable institution elsewhere would have as a cost of administration. All of us have done our very best in this university to be cost-conscious, and I think more of that obviously will come. Thank you all know that the state legislature has already mandated in something like $8 million rescission of our budget between now and the 30th of June, ending this fiscal year. And it's possible that more of that may come after the May forecast if it indeed shows that the till is running dry between now and the end of June. Let me start by making two fundamental distinctions that were part of the letter that Provost Bean and I wrote to all university employees. When we talk of the university's budget issues or anyone's budget issues, there are two periods of time. One is between now and the end of this fiscal year, June 30th. The next is planning for the biennial budget for the years 2009 through 2011. And so we'll try as we go through all of these mental gymnastics to be as clear as we can about which period we are referring to in this. We believe that the budgeting for the period between now and the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, has by and large been handled by the rescission. If the May forecast shows that there isn't even enough money to carry us through the allotted budget for that period of time for the state agencies, I'm thinking it's probable, and the best guess is that it is probable that the legislature will look to the Rainy Day Fund or to the Educational Stability Fund, both of which are in essence great big state savings accounts recently established in order to balance the budget, simply because in the six weeks remaining it is so difficult to do that without massive personnel actions that are probably impractical to take during that period of time. Now, that's a political guess, but it's our best guess at this moment. Planning for the next biennium, 2009-2011, is both heartening and complicated. It's complicated because the revenue forecast almost assuredly will show at least a quarter of the state's expected revenues vanished by virtue of the unemployment figures that we have seen. So short of the Great Depression, I can't recall any time except possibly the early 1980s in which a budget picture for this state changed so suddenly. We are absolutely not alone. In fact, if anything, Oregon is lagging behind very serious cutback in state budgets that have been experienced by Florida, by Nevada, by California, and Washington. And in fact, planning for the University of California system and for the University of Washington is, in many respects, even more dire than the planning that we have undergone so far in this state. And a helpful state-by-state summary that I read just this morning from as many states of the Union as could be gathered by those who do this sort of thing, shows that virtually everyone is looking at these same kinds of problems. So there's nothing unique to the University of Oregon or the Oregon University system except for the relatively later onset of the economic turmoil that we see. Now, thanks to the good work of Brad Shelton and of our General Counsel Melinda Greer and her colleagues in the General Counsel's office, and early discovery was made about 10 days ago of the regulations of the Department of Education implementing federal stimulus legislation. Those regulations impose conditions on a state's receipt of federal stimulus funds, and in Oregon's case, this is something like $500 million. These are funds that are so vast that they cannot reasonably be turned down. They have what's called a maintenance of effort provision that requires states accepting them to have a minimal floor for support of education, at least back to the 2005-2006 level. And in addition, those stimulus funds are supposed to boost state's funding for education up to something like the 2008-2009 levels. And they're to do that on the pain of the loss of the funds. Now, whether that has been fully assimilated in the state's budgeting process to date is probably doubtful, but it must be because the state must certify to the federal government in a fairly simple way that it's maintained its effort and it cannot take disproportionately from higher education in order to assist K through 12. So it can cannibalize one section of education funding at the expense of others. So this is all still playing out at the federal level and it's all still playing out at the state level. And so we have had to go through, before this all plays out, a series of budget-cutting scenarios that would envision as much as a 30 percent cutback and then a 20 percent cutback. And I think you all know that this is happening, but that's why it's happening, because until we have final results from Salem, we need to plan, or at least the state system needs to plan, and to put those results into the legislature for its consideration of these scenarios. I realize that this creates uncertainty, and uncertainty sometimes breeds insecurity, fear, concern, and why shouldn't it? But I think I need to share with you at least that in the short run, the maintenance of effort and the stabilization funds should make things perhaps less dire than some might have predicted. It is clear that some of this will be done on the backs of our students. That is to say, in planning for tuition increases, first of all, responsibly, we can't do it right now with an exact number because almost assuredly that number would be wrong until we know what the state is going to appropriate and how much of the gap shortfall needs to be filled by tuition. We've informed our student leaders of that fact. They understand it. Obviously, they're unhappy with it. And the problem with it is, of course, that the tuition level is unlikely to be set before most of our students have gone away for summer vacation. That's simply an unavoidable and unhappy piece of the way the legislative calendar works. And it works the same way adversely, frankly, with respect to our nine-month faculty who have the same issues, which is they obviously, we obviously want to know where we stand, and we may not be sure of that until the legislature has finalized its budgets, and it's quite clear to me, based on considerable years' experience, that will not happen before the end of June. So both the tuition and the level of our budget probably will not be known till the early summer. I wish it were otherwise, but that's a piece of it. We have assured the students that 30 cents out of every tuition dollar increase above a cost of living increase will be devoted to student financial aid. So it's our best surmise, and certainly it's our objective to make it family income-neutral, so that no matter what the increase in tuition, it is cushioned by need-related aid taken basically off the top of those increases. Other institutions in the system have projected tuition increases even higher than ours. Ours is not final. It's only notional. It could get into the double digits each of the years. I think you know that from the newspaper headlines, and that's really why, because it's a filler for where we need to be. Well, there's much more that might want to be said, but I know that others on the platform have information that they wish to share with you, so at this moment I'll turn the podium over to Provost Jim Bean. Thanks again for coming. We really appreciate your attentiveness to these issues.
Well, thanks, Dave. That very well sets up the environment in which we're trying to do budgeting these days. So as President Frommeyer suggested, that there are really two problems we're talking about. Let me begin actually with the second one, because we have much more uncertainty there and we want to spend more time talking about the issues in front of us for this year. So let me go forward to the next biennium. You've seen probably in the press that we've been asked to plan for a 30 percent cut in our budgets. That means a $25 million reduction out of our $80 million base. This happens for us in a time where we are lucky to have some countering positive elements. One is, the brand is so strong that we have, again this year, some of the strongest student demand, both in-state and out-state, that we have seen before. The issues in Washington and California, both our systems that don't take very large sets of out-of-state students, have caused those universities to shrink the number of spots they're going to be accepting next year, which is causing a significant increase in our demand. In the Cal State system, they've reduced 10 percent. In the UC system, they've reduced over 6 percent, and there are possible additional reductions as they're still working through their budget issues. The president of the UC system just announced last week that they will be using an across-the-board furlough system in all UC schools. The House and Senate in Washington passed budgets a week before last that had the cuts at the University of Washington respectively at $189 million and $260 million. These are truly scary numbers. Remember, I just said our state budget is $80 million a year. Those numbers for them were a biennium, so in a biennium we would get 160, but still, the cuts that they're having proposed are larger than our entire budget. We also have the fact that we have very strong grants and contracts funding. That has increased recently through the strong stimulus package out of the federal government, making new opportunities available there. The fourth source of revenues we have is the foundation, and I'm sure you've read everywhere the difficulties that endowments are having everywhere in the country. In fact, our foundation has done exceptionally well with losses in the 18 to 19 percent, and that was before the recent run-up, so they're now probably reduced from that level. Whereas at the worst, some of the major endowments in the country that you know of Harvard and Yale and Stanford were in the 30 percent to 40 percent, some of them. So in fact, we've been served well, but nonetheless, that's an additional reduction to us that's in the tens of millions of dollars in funding that's not available from the foundation during these difficult times. So we have the pleasant situation of having some pluses and some minuses. So it is complicated for people to understand where the net is on this. As we look into the future, at the range of possible cuts we might get, at the 30 percent level, which seems to be the largest being discussed for us, it leaves us with a pretty good hole to fill, probably in the order of $20 million. And that means looking at the cuts, netting the increases in tuition, netting the increased costs of benefits, the increased costs of energy, the increased costs of financial aid for the extra students, all of that put together winds up still about $20 million in the hole. If we have a cut of only $20 million, it's much more modest, and we're hoping that the maintenance of effort provisions that President Frommeyer talked about will move us more towards that much more reasonable situation, but we just don't know yet. So we're not prepared to talk to you today about FTE reductions or salary reductions or anything else yet relative to the next biennium. It's a complicated manner, and we just don't know what the story is going to be at this point. But let me switch gears now to this year, where we know not everything, but a lot more. We have by legislative action been given a rescission of $8.9 million, $8.6 million. And that means money that was appropriated to us for this biennium, they want back. And it's difficult because it happened so late in the year that we can't say, "Well, let's tighten our belt for the second year of the biennium and somehow recover much of that." There just wasn't that much time left. So in working with the Faculty Advisory Committee, the Senate Budget Committee, the Budget Planning Committee, we've come up with a plan to share this cost across three different groups. You're aware that the State Board of Higher Ed approved an increase of tuition for the students for this term that was $150 for in-state students and $350 for out-state students. We take off the top 30 percent of that for financial aid for those who are truly impacted and would not be able to continue in school for those kinds of increases. And the net that we're able to use to reduce this $8.6 million debt is $2.1 million. So that's one segment. We now have two other segments that we treat somewhat differently and are separated between schools and colleges and the central administrative units, which include really a lot of the organizations in finance and administration, student affairs, academic affairs, the library we've included in this area as well for a reason I'll describe in a second, even though it's usually considered one of the schools and colleges. And because of the operations being different between these two, we've decided to address the two groups of the schools and colleges and the central organization somewhat differently. The schools and colleges have very different cultures and operate somewhat differently, have different levels of reserves, have different levels of faculty salaries. And so whenever possible, we allow the schools and colleges to take into account their own cultures, their own capabilities, to deal with the cuts that they need to deal with. This is the same thing we ask the legislature to do for the university. We say to them, "Just give us a number and let us run our business." So for each of the schools and colleges, to the deans, we've said the same thing. "Here's your share. You run your business." And across the schools and colleges, we've dedicated 2.8 million of the 8.6. So that leaves 3.7 million for the central team. So that consists of the support organizations for students and finance and administration, athletics, everybody else that is outside the schools and colleges. And there, what we've tried to do is, we have 3.7 million left. Now, if you look at the salaries between schools and colleges and the central organizations, they're much larger in the schools and colleges, so note that we are taking substantially larger cuts out of the central organizations than the schools and colleges. Two reasons for that. One is that that was the instruction of the State Board of Higher Education, who we work for. But the other is, the fundamental mission of the institution is instruction and research, and that is done largely in the schools and colleges. And so to the extent possible, we want to reduce the impacts on those core functions. That's the more substantive reason. So for the central organizations, we've really approached the issue in two ways. One is, we've gone through all the budgets of those organizations and talked with the leadership in some cases, and in some cases, just gone through the books, and wherever possible, have swept balances that we expect at the end of this year. We've combined those with what small reserves we had left in the university, and we're still well short of the $3.7 million. So what tools do we have left? Well, as President Frommeyer said, 80 percent of our overall budget is salaries, so we need to find some way to share the burden over salaries as well. And so again, we have chosen to treat the two groups somewhat differently. In the central organizations, we're asking for those who would like to volunteer to do so, to contribute a small amount of their salary to that $3.7 million bogey that we need to return back to the state. In the schools and colleges, we are giving the FTE reduction program basically to the schools and colleges as a tool. And the importance of using this tool will really vary by school and college. In some areas, there may be reserves that would allow them to cover much of the rescission that they'll have to deal with without resorting to this. In others, it might be a tool that they need to use to avoid significant damage to the programs, and that's a decision that the faculty and staff in each of the schools and colleges will have to analyze. But these numbers aren't small. We just sent out the detailed numbers to the deans yesterday. For example, in the College of Arts and Sciences, the number is over $1.5 million. So it is going to be a challenge, even though we did as much as we could to protect the schools and colleges, we've just literally run out of other options. So one of the other aspects in putting together this program is we'd been approached by a large number of members of our community saying, "We're hearing about furloughs other places. We want to participate. We know what kind of rescissions are here. You know, how can we get involved?" And rather than just do things willy-nilly, we put together the website and the processes so people could understand what they were getting into by helping out like this. And I can tell you, in the last couple of days, I've had many people just pass me on 13th Street saying, "I've signed up and thanks for setting up the system." There are others that are not so excited about participating in this. And while I hope that as many of us as possible feel part of the team, part of this community in addressing this problem, it's really a personal decision and there will be no retributions. In fact, I never hope to know who is in or out. But it's something you really, particularly in schools and colleges, need to talk with your administrators to find out how critical it's going to be to surviving these next few weeks to get participation. The first round we actually did was leadership. It was the president, the vice presidents, the vice provost, the deans, faculty leadership. There were some associate vice presidents, some directors involved in that program as well. We asked some of the higher-paid coaches and administrators in the athletic department, and we've gotten really exceptional response. We don't have reports from all the groups yet, but I know that the deans through the president had 100 percent response. So we're out there in front. Certainly, that would be necessary for us to even dare to ask anyone to join us in Most of those funds actually go to help the university directly. Actually, the president and the vice presidents' funds are swept directly to the governor's budget. So I don't feel quite as good about mine as perhaps some of you will about yours. So that's really what we're about now. We're in this period, actually, this first sign-up deadline is tomorrow. And the key for that is not that you can't sign up after tomorrow. You can. The issue is, tomorrow is the deadline for you to be able to spread whatever you choose to do over three months instead of two or one, which is more comfortable. So if you choose to do something in these next couple of days, you have more flexibility in doing it. And so as we get a tabulation of the total dollars that are signed up in the system, what we'll be doing for the schools and colleges is reducing their overall number. For example, the 1.5 million to Arts and Sciences will be reduced by that amount that they'll have to come up with. In the central organizations, it will all go directly to that $3.7 million number that we have to come up with centrally. So I'm sure we'll have a number of questions about this, as we've certainly found out that, as we explained in the letter, wasn't understood entirely by everyone, and I apologize for not going on. Sometimes it's a trade-off between whether we want a 25-page document that no one will read to try and get everything in there, or really whether we want to start some discussions and get down to some questions, which hopefully we will do today. One of the key issues that I'm worried about over these next several months is maintaining the sense of cohesive community and teamwork within the University of Oregon. As you know, there are negotiations at the state level and the system level with the Classified Staff Union. There are requests for day furlough reductions for the classified staff. And I think one of the really terrible outcomes that we could have here is if we wound up with the classified staff having to bear a significant burden of these reductions while the unclassified staff were not significantly involved. It just is something that doesn't feel like Oregon to me. So that's one of the things we're going to have to see develop, and we just don't know how those are going to come out, and we will keep you apprised as to how those are developing. Let me finish up with, oh, one thing that was not clear to a lot of people is, on the forms, it said that you needed your supervisor's signature. And I know that's caused some consternation with a number of the faculty, which having been one for many years, don't really consider ourselves as having a supervisor. That provision was really in there for employees that want to participate that are in time-critical positions, for example DPS or people in housing, where we need to have specified coverage. So all we're really looking for there is that So all we're really looking for there is that you choose to do this in a way that can be coordinated to cover what needs to be covered. Quite honestly, for faculty, we don't need your supervisor's signature as long as you understand that you cannot take furloughs on teaching days, but perhaps committee meeting days would be okay. So any clarification, that's a clarification on that, where we're not really trying to impose a hierarchical structure on the faculty. We just need some parts of the university to continue to be covered and operate during all this period. So let me, for one last thing, talk about a few of the rumors that I've heard over the last couple of weeks about this, and some of them I can debunk, and others, maybe you'll have other questions about, and that'll be fine. Let's begin with the sign. Okay, million-dollar sign? No, it's not a million-dollar sign. Where did that number come from? The Portland City Council, at one point, trying to put pressure on us, passed a motion saying they'd be willing to spend a million dollars to buy that sign to stop us from putting the University of Oregon on it. Well, it turns out that had nothing to do with the price of the sign, that was just kind of political theater. The truth is, we don't know the cost of the sign at this point, because it's being negotiated. And in fact, the way things settled in the city, we perhaps think the sign is worth a little bit less than it might have been before. The most important issue is that the foundation put aside the money specifically for this sign well over a year ago, and there will be no general fund dollars involved in buying the sign. So it's completely independent of the issue of general fund rescissions and things like that. It's really a foundation issue. And the deal that was struck is a fairly complicated one. It would take me the rest of the hour to even go through the details, but I will tell you that all of us that know the details think U of O came out pretty well on this thing. So that one shouldn't impact anything that's happening on this. Let's talk about Bend. How come we're spending all that money in a program in Bend when we need money here in Eugene? First of all, we don't have a campus in Bend. Oregon State has a campus in Bend. We offer a few programs within that campus. Our programs actually operate at a slight profit, very slight, but in the black. And in fact, with significant increases in FTEs that they're seeing for this term and the fall, will be even a little bit more in the black. You may have seen in some of the articles that the state has indicated that if we go to the 30% cut level, that the OSU Cascade's campus will receive cuts in excess of the other campuses. That could certainly cause some rethinking about the whole Bend situation, and how we integrate with that campus, because it could be very difficult. But again, we don't know if we'll be in that scenario, because we don't know if we'll be in that 30% cut scenario. Let's talk about Portland and the $17 million that we didn't spend on White Stag, because we didn't buy or develop White Stag. White Stag was purchased by a group called Venerable Properties with our promise to lease a portion of the building. There are several other tenants in the building. They did the initial renovation of the building and are leasing it to us. We passed through much of the leases to groups such as AHA, the athletic department. Much of the staffing there is actually paid by the schools and colleges who choose to operate in Portland. AAA Journalism and Communications are the largest tenants there. So we did spend a good amount of money in tenant finish and renovation of the interior to get it to be set up the way we like, but we also sold a building in Portland whose proceeds were in excess of what we've spent to this point in renovation. So again, Portland has not been a significant drain on the finances here in Eugene. A lot of the funding to redo this building came from economic redevelopment funds that Venerable received because of its location in Old Town and the desire on the part of the city to use this as a centerpiece to renovate that entire section of the city, and it's working very well. So let me stop there. Maybe you'll have some other good rumors that we can talk about when we get to the questions, which we will do, I guess, now. And let me also say, President Fronmeyer mentioned, we will continue questions afterwards. The email provost@uo.edu will be tracked for the next several days for questions, and we'll be pulling them together into fax or answering them directly. So write that one down if you have things you don't think of until this afternoon. Provost@uoregon.edu will be watching. So again, if you'd like to step up to the microphones to ask questions, that'll be great. If not, raise your hand, we'll get you a card and a pen, write them down, and one of our helpful assistants will read them into the microphones, and hopefully we can get all the questions answered. So, thank you.
(applause)
As I mentioned, I certainly agree with your statement, the end. As you know, SEIU is negotiating with DAS and OUS, and we're not in a position to engage in those. So it's not, we're not the ones trying to take any of those things back. And in fact, we're in discussion amongst ourselves about how we're going to make this a fair situation on the campus if it becomes unfair. But that's about all we can say about those negotiations.
Yeah, thank you for your statement. I think everyone, or I hope you all understand that it'd probably be an unfair labor practice to talk about what strategies are or what's on the table. We're at, Jim and I are not at the table, and that is occurring elsewhere at a system-wide and state level. So appreciate the concern that's been expressed. We do read the literature that you submit, and we have met with classified staff, both in public meetings and in a smaller meeting in my office, and we certainly will stay as attuned to your concerns as we can, and thank you for offering them. But further response, we really can't do here. Professor Barbara Altman, who, as you all may know, is also chair of the Faculty Advisory Council, please.
I'm ahead of the line, but I have to go teach in a few minutes, so I'll just use the opportunity now. I've been asked to speak as a spokesperson for the Faculty Advisory Council, and we'd like you, first of all, to know that the council, the council members, always and faculty included, all really understand the many, many, many reasons why our colleagues might not want to participate in the voluntary salary reduction. The list is long, we've discussed all the negatives. At the moment, however, this is the only mechanism we've got for making a difference for the rest of this particular fiscal year. And unanimously, the Faculty Advisory Council would like to offer you a couple of good reasons to go ahead and make a voluntary contribution, even if you're feeling a little reluctant to do so. First of all, and most important, is simply acting in solidarity with the other two groups on campus who won't have any choice in the matter. Our students are already paying increased tuition, and they face a very large hike next year. Our unionized colleagues won't have any choice in the matter either, and it seems a real gross unfairness for those who are not in classified positions to be held harmless at a point when we face a real and serious deficit. For me, the clincher was this morning, hearing that the unemployment rate in the state of Oregon had hit 12%. We need to make a gesture. As one of my wise friends and colleagues said the other day, "It is a time when symbolic gestures are worth a great deal, and the dollar figure is probably less important than the willingness to step up." So Faculty Advisory Council does recognize, obviously, it's a difficult and individual decision for everyone, but we feel that the solidarity and the importance of making a political statement and showing that U of O does not have the elitist faculty that we're believed to be by much of the state is really crucial right now. There's not much of the pay year left for those of us in, before that fiscal year ends June 30th, especially for those of us on nine-month contracts. So, you know, you can make a contribution, make yourself heard, participate, and actually not forfeit a lot of your salary between now and the end of the year. Personally speaking, now, not as a spokesperson for the committee, but myself, I've been deeply divided on this, and I think I can speak for my colleagues by saying that we all think this is really a very flawed mechanism. I think everyone would vastly prefer a mandated cut that would be even and across the board, and not put each individual into the awkward position of having to choose to participate, feeling perhaps that you're a chump if you decide to buy in, or you're a sellout if you don't. So it is indeed a very problematic thing to ask people to do, under the circumstances and at the moment. It's the only mechanism we've got. So the consensus, the considered consensus of the committee is to encourage you to consider participating. Thank you.
Professor Gilkey, do you have a question?
Yes, this is one that I've been given by the audience. How will the general fund rescissions affect research centers with grants and contracts and few general funds?
The question was how a rescission will affect grants and contracts for those who are funded in that manner. Francis, do you want?
Many of our research centers have a combination of general funds and federal funds and funds from other sources. We cannot, nor do we wish to touch the federal funds or the gift funds. However, the general thinking is that the research funding will have the same rules applied to it that the academic units do. Again, it's core mission.
Professor Vitouli?
Yeah. Marie Vitouli, I'm in the mathematics department. I've also been a member of the Senate Budget Committee for the last three years. Although we were told about this plan in the Senate Budget Committee, we weren't part of the planning, or certainly, we weren't part of the decision-making. It's too bad that we have just this one thing on the table. We weren't given any choices. Other campuses in the state of Oregon have dealt with this problem in different ways. Some campuses are being given, well, the opportunity that we usually have of making charitable contributions to the institution, and then you can get a tax deduction. If we're to take salary reductions, other places are finding ways to buffer the impact on lower-salaried people or people close to retirement. We were not given any options like that. I hope next year, when this budget process comes about, faculty and staff are more involved from the beginning in the planning, in the decision-making. I feel like we weren't this time, and I feel like we all have to think very hard before agreeing to this one option we were given. We should have been given others. And I got to run off to teach a 10 o'clock class. Thank you.
Can I respond a little bit to that? First of all, the system on the web does allow for charitable contributions as well, and that's particularly important for those of you that are very near retirement and are setting up PERS funding levels. It's important for those that are paid entirely on grants and contracts, because you cannot take an FTE reduction against those. And so that is another option that you're given here. However, we've been told by tax advisors that making charitable contributions to your employer is a very complicated legal issue, and by far, the best way to get the tax reduction is to take the FTE reduction. It doesn't change your base salary. If you don't get the money, you can't be taxed on it. But there is some question as to whether or not you'll be taxed on gift contributions. As far as the variable amounts of involvement by people at lower salaries versus higher salaries, that is embedded in the system, because you get to choose how much is appropriate for you. And we all encourage each of you to look at what your capabilities are. The 4.6%, which is the one-day-a-month level, is something that was suggested by the governor's office, but many of us actually, in senior administration, did more than that as part of the process, and so each of you needs to look at your own situation. So those issues are actually built into the system. The system was presented to the groups that I mentioned earlier, long before it was a done deal, and there were lots of good suggestions about modifying it from these discussions. So I believe that these organizations were very much part of the decision-making process.
Let me just add something that I hope is obvious, and that is that when the issue as to how we would balance this biennium's budget, there's only four months to go, and it had to move very quickly, or it couldn't be done and spread across as many people as possible in order to minimize its impact. I would not advise, and I think that anyone who has talked to us would know this, would not advise someone whose retirement is imminent to do it this way. We certainly don't want anyone to do it who is at a .5 FTE and who might lose health insurance, which I would think would be an abominable result, and we don't want anyone to be in that position. That's why it is a voluntary program. So it was put together very quickly in order to allow it to be one of the tools that we could use to fill that $3 million gap for the balance of this four months. Obviously, this is the kind of thing that we can't do by plebiscite, we wanted to do with the maximum amount of engagement. And any such program that might or might not be part of next biennium's planning, obviously, we have much more lead time to do. Question here, please.
Ian McNeil, History Department. I want to second Barbara Altman's point about the need for solidarity between faculty and classified staff. And yet, if we're talking about symbolic issues, we have to talk about the real elite on campus, who are the athletic coaches, some of whom make well more than you yourself, President Fronmeyer. I read today that the new women's basketball coach will make $400,000 more per year than the previous women's basketball coach, and at $65,177 a year, that's six times my entire annual salary. I want to give, but I just feel like it's a drop in the bucket. I know the coaches are giving too, but it's just grotesque, the amount that they make, and I just can't see my way through departing with my money, given the gross inequities across campus. Thanks.
What I can say about that is that, like one of the schools or colleges, the athletic department, the Department of Intercollegiate Athletics, is expected to balance its own budget and operate within its revenues. They have $0 coming out of the general fund that are involved with this rescission. So I find some of those numbers amazing, too, but it's not impacting any of the things we're discussing here, other than perhaps shaking your head.
Julie Hessler, History Department. I have two questions. One is really genuinely a question involving furloughs versus pay cuts. I, as a tenured faculty member, I can see why a mandatory furlough is legally very problematic, because it does raise questions about the nature of tenure, this is a problem. On the other hand, we unclassified employees were given a large pay increase in November, and I wonder why the decision was taken not to And at $65,177 a year, that's six times my entire annual salary. I want to give, but I just feel like it's a drop in the bucket. I know the coaches are giving too, but it's just grotesque, the amount that they make. And I just can't see my way through departing with my money, given the gross inequities across campus. Thanks.
What I can say about that is that, like one of the schools or colleges, the athletic department, the Department of Intercollegiate Athletics, is expected to balance its own budget and operate within its revenues. They have $0 coming out of the general fund that are involved with this rescission. So I find some of those numbers amazing, too. But it's not impacting any of the things we're discussing here, other than perhaps shaking your head.
Julie Hessler, History Department. I have two questions. One is really genuinely a question involving furloughs versus pay cuts. I, as a tenured faculty member, I can see why a mandatory furlough is legally very problematic, because it does raise questions about the nature of tenure. This is a problem. On the other hand, we unclassified employees were given a large pay increase in November. And I wonder why the decision was taken not to say that some of that pay increase was untenable, and to make a mandatory pay cut for the remainder of this academic year that returns some of that 4 percent that we were given. The second question is more of a comment, and it actually relates to what Ian just said. Namely, that I have heard a lot of commentary on campus among faculty to the effect that, you know, recession is seen as a time for streamlining, rethinking, refocusing on our core mission. That's the academic mission. And there's a lot of kind of commentary that higher administration has grown in numbers, so that the administrative, total administrative payroll has grown both kind of disproportionately to the growth of faculty salaries, both in terms of the number of vice presidents and senior administrators around on campus, and in terms of administrative, kind of administrative compensation. And there is a lot of resentment at this. I don't know the facts of the matter, but particularly people who have been around here for quite some time have the sense that in the last five to 10 years, there's been an extraordinary growth in higher, total higher administrative compensation.
Well, let me address the second one, and then I'll pass the first one to Melinda. In every campus I've ever worked, there has been that same perception. In the other campus I worked, it was true. Here it's not. President Fernmeyer mentioned a truly amazing statistic, which, and this came out of OUS numbers against an OUS-defined set of comparators, meaning this was not a calculation we did in the administration, that the administrative cost per student FTE on this campus is 38 percent of the average of our comparators. The competitors are Washington, Arizona, Colorado, Kansas, Iowa, Michigan, North Carolina. I think that's most of them. Now, if we were 80 percent of average, we would be lean. At 38 percent of average, one wonders how we can even function. And in fact, we had a very difficult decision to make not too long ago where we extended the implementation process for the new budget model. And largely, it was because with all of the pressure that we have to administer the requests from the legislative session, we couldn't do both things at the same time. We just don't have the staffing to do it centrally. Last fall during the strategic budgeting process, I had requests for nearly 70 new staff positions. And I rejected 65. So we are keeping the administration here exceptionally lean, probably too lean for the good of the university, especially as we move into a more independent, more self-sufficient function. And those of you that are working in administrative staff positions know that you're not sitting around with nothing to do. People are carrying a very heavy load. It is true that there is a lot more administrative work to do because the system has, over the years, pushed much of that load onto the universities. Quite honestly, we want it here so that we can make good decisions, but it has really stressed out the system. So from a financial perspective, we spend less on administration than any of our comparator universities that I'm aware. You want to talk about mandatory?
I think that the question was asked about why can't we rescind the salary increases? Salary increases come, and they're a matter of contract. And so it's not as easy just to roll them back once they're out there. And I think, in thinking about it, there were two reasons, in addition to the legal reason, which is a locked-in reason, something we can't look at, and we can't negotiate about. That's just the way the law is. But I think in addition to that, there was a question of that really then has the effect of adjusting the base. And the University of Oregon's worked for a long time to try to increase the base of faculty. And the program that is in place would not affect the base, but would have the same effect of reducing the amount of personnel costs. So there was both the legal reason, which is, once the salary is granted, it can't be rolled back. But there's also the policy reason, and both of those suggested, in fact, that the right approach was the approach of either allowing people to take an FTE reduction, or allowing people to make a charitable contribution, whichever worked best for them.
The decision to make the salary adjustment in November was a considered one. It was deliberate. Many people had already received a 4 percent increase, but many more had not. It was bargained for with respect to classified staff with some nuances that are beyond the point I'm trying to make here. But in order to treat everyone fairly, we determined that it was appropriate to make sure that that increase went through so that everyone shared equally on what we expected to do through different periods through the balance of this year. And we did so knowing that it was likely that we could not make future immediate raises possible for perhaps the foreseeable future. I stand by the decision. I think it was the right thing to do to treat everyone fairly, given the economic uncertainties that we faced, and given what we all know has been a considered effort on the part of the Senate Budget Committee, the administration, to bring faculty salaries in line with the principles of the White Paper, which have basically governed my view of how we should have improved our salary position for our academic faculty from the very beginning. So while it may make the overall budgetary issue somewhat more complicated, I think it was fair and the right thing to do across the board.
I might also add that if we had not done the across-the-board 4 percent raise in November, we still would have gotten the same rescission. Personally, I think it was one of the best things we did, because it allowed us to buffer ourselves from some of what's coming right now. Please.
Hi, my name's Keith Gonzalez. I do IT for Biology and Environmental Studies, and I assist with IT for many other departments. I'm also a classified staff member. I have two questions. One is, the Campaign Oregon was a very successful program, and since the infrastructure is there, I'm wondering and looking towards the next biennium, if we can possibly start a new campaign to help meet the budgetary deficits for the next biennium, since we already have that in place. And the second question I have, which I haven't heard in any conversations, is where are all the lucrative lottery funds that were supposed to actually enhance education that seem to be not in the discussions whatsoever? Thank you.
Well, let me address Campaign Oregon first. Yes, it was extraordinarily successful, and the campaign effort continues. And our hope is to continue at our pace of raising between $90 and $100 million a year. That's pretty ambitious in this economic climate, when almost all philanthropic organizations with which I'm, of which I'm aware, and it's a lot of them, are having huge problems in terms of getting contributions from discretionary income, because people at whatever income level don't feel they have very much discretion left in times of uncertainty. I think if we see a tick up in expectations, that that will indeed help our philanthropy even more. But the short answer to the question is, the campaign continues in that regard. Supporting its infrastructure is actually more difficult in terms of budget, as you might imagine internally, and that's something that we're having continuing discussions about. Lottery revenues, regrettably, are down in the state as a whole. We've never felt that they were a substitute for the kind of general fund support that ought to be the heartbeat of public support for the institution. But they're down as a matter, because apparently discretionary gambling is off as well. Professor Gilkey?
Yes, I would like to read two additional questions. First of all, if everyone, faculty and classified staff, participates at one day a month for the next three months, how much money would be saved? I guess that's Francis.
That would be Francis, and I'm thinking about that. Peter, what's your second question?
The second question is, what are the other OUS institutions doing? Are they the only ones being asked to take voluntary furloughs? Are they in better shape, or are they planning layoffs or some other approach?
Well, I don't think that we're, I think that facing the long run, because of the strong demand for the University of Oregon services, and frankly, because of notwithstanding perceptions of a pretty lean administrative sum, that we're in a strong position to weather this as best we can. The 30 percent cut scenario for other institutions looks awful.
Some of the things that I've heard is, one of our sister institutions has sent a letter stating that they were preparing to declare financial exigency. Another is basically sending timely notice letters to everyone. There is discussion of program discontinuation, even at the lower cut levels that we expect. There are discussions of tuition increases, over 20 percent on some of the campuses. There are furlough discussions, and many of them in the unionized campuses, they're simpler in the sense that it's a negotiation with the union as opposed to a negotiation with each individual contract holder that we have here.
Peter, the answer that we looked at was if all staff, and the current program, of course, does not include anything but officers of administration and instructional and research faculty, if everyone were taking one day a month, we would expect to recover $1 million per month. But we're not including classified in this. And I don't have that number with me.
So that's per month?
Per day.
The net total would be $3 million over the next...
Is Laura Hubbard in the room? She actually made the calculation. Laura made the calculation.
Laura is in the room, and Laura is approaching the mic. Thank you, Laura Hubbard.
Thanks for putting me on the spot. No. Yes, you have that correct, Francis. The calculation was that if we looked at all staff on all sources of funds, so that's grants and contracts, everything, we would save about $1 million for every one day that all of those people took off. That includes the salary plus the incremental piece of benefits that are a function of salary. That includes classified, yes.
Dennis A. Bear, Facility Services, Classified, SEIU, OPEU. In the union, we preach unity. We preach cohesion. We're all for one and one for all. It's not every man for himself. Seems at the university these days that we have these segments and these factions, that sometimes when we ask for an answer, they say, "Well, that's not our money. That's their money." We have athletics, we have the foundation, we have the university, we have the different colleges. It seems like to me some type of scenario should be brought into place, be it legally or just through a movement, to see how we can tap these funds. We've seen how the foundation can buy property, then sell it back to the university. We've seen how they can buy property, let someone else develop it, then give it back to the university. There seems to be no mechanism for the foundation loaning money to the university to pay back, or perhaps even the athletic department actually becoming a part of the university, since it is the cliche TEAM, there is no I in team, but there seems to be a big I in athletics. That being said, salaries have been spoken of and everything. This is well and good. We'll have to just endeavor what we can on this stream of thought. But on the closer note, being in Facility Services, we've heard that there's going to be some renovations done at the McMoRan House and at Johnson Hall for the new incoming president. And we were just wondering how many furlough days are going to have to be taken from classified staff employees, because evidently the house and the office was great for Mr. Fernmeyer. We feel that perhaps the new president could just slide right in.
Let me respond a couple of ways. One is, we can and do borrow money from the foundation. Right now, the foundation has very little spare cash. The only reason they're involved with the sign is that was committed and sequestered over a year ago. The athletic department recently contributed $100,000 from their TV revenues in the fall to help offset the cuts in the library as part of the additional funding we did. So we have been really improving our relations with them. They actually are financially in tight times as well. They have had travel freezes and hiring freezes and things that we have not had to do on the academic side. As far as the renovations go, not all of it, but much of that funding is coming from the system, because the president actually doesn't work for the university. The presidents in each campus work for the State Board of Higher Ed. All the rest of us work for the university. And so a lot of that funding comes because those, that residents and office are really system-supported.
I'd also like to comment on the property purchases from the foundation. So the foundation is able to act very nimbly to take advantage of deals out in the marketplace that will advantage the university, and that would take us longer to do or cost us more to do. They purchase the property at a price we agree to, and they do not profit from selling it back to us. We always enter into those agreements with the agreed purchase price.
And one other thing I'd add with that, foundation funds, they do have a lot of money, and we are fortunate to have a foundation that has money and manages it well. Much of the money they have is actually restricted. It's given for a specific purpose. So they're not free to just make it available to the university to use for operating costs. Probably, there are a lot of people here or in departments or areas where you get money, and that money is protected for your use because the donor had in mind that. And so if the foundation were to just take it and make it available, that would, one, be contrary to what they're obligated to do, their fiduciary obligations to mind the money. And it also would be pretty unpleasant, if you're one of those people who's a recipient, to find that your money had actually been used for other purposes. So I think that it is a lot of money, and we're really lucky to have that money, but they don't have the flexibility to use it, as in times like this we might hope that they could.
Thank you for the responses. Last time I came up to the mic at the first town hall, I had Krabby the Purple Furlough Crab, who's crabby about furloughs, but I'm not actually going to talk directly to furloughs this time, and Krabby's sitting a few rows back. This is kind of a point of order, I guess, or a point of information. One of the first people who spoke, I believe it was the woman from the Faculty Advisory Council, was using the word "choice," and those who don't have a choice. And there might be a little misunderstanding about how unions function, and how those who support unions can function and can help, and actually do have choices. Until the contract is settled, we have choices on how we act and how we support each other. And I've heard a lot of faculty concern about the furloughs affecting classified. Honestly, there may even be some guilt, not that these people are responsible for what's being thrown at us at the bargaining table. But if a person wanted to alleviate their guilt, and they wanted to show support, and they wanted to make a choice, classifieds have this form, and some people who came through the door picked up the pink form. And I just want to read what it says. It says, "Oregon leaders have a choice. Demand disproportionate sacrifice from public employee and those we serve, students and parents, the elderly and disabled, unemployed, and low-wage workers. Or ask large corporations and wealthy individuals to start contributing their fair share to fund services our communities need." Now, it's worded in a way that sounds heavy on the Department of Administrative Services, not so much about education. But we are listed on this because it talks about the kinds of quality public services we classified employees in the university system provide. And it doesn't say that you have to be a union member to fill this out, and there's more of them as you go out the door. And it would be appreciated if you would fill out your concern about us getting a fair settlement. You can also contact the chancellor's office, because as was stated earlier, these are not the people who are at the bargaining table. But they also have a voice, and they have a choice. And I believe that though they don't talk about it, they've let people in the chancellor's office know that the university people here, the classified, are terribly concerned, especially our lowest-paid workers. And the more I think about it, the more I think not getting paid on a holiday really sucks. Thank you.
Star, I hope there's not a day that goes by that every member of this campus community is not fully aware...
community is not fully aware of the degree to which we are grateful to you and your colleagues for all that you do to make the University of Oregon what it is. And if we're not unaware of that sufficiently, let me once again say thank you. Thank you to all of our classified staff who work so hard to make this place what it is. I admire your community. I admire your efforts. And I know that that feeling that I've just expressed is shared by everyone here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paul Van Donkler. I'm the president of the university senate, and I just want to echo the statements that Barb Altman made earlier, asking faculty to support the voluntary FTE reduction and do their part to help share in the burden. Clearly, the students have been asked to do so with the tuition surcharge this term and a very likely increase in tuition next term. Classified staff is in negotiations that will likely result in an ask for unpaid furlough days, as we've just heard. And so I think the faculty also need to step up to the plate. It would look quite bad if the students and the classified staff had to bear the brunt of this and the faculty were less than willing to do so, both internally but also externally with the general public and with the state legislators. So I ask that you seriously consider this and contribute as much as you're able to. Also, in terms of moving forward, I think, once we know more after the May 15 announcement about the future of the Oregon economy, it behooves us all to be as involved and informed as possible about what the next steps are for the next biennium at the University of Oregon. So the provost and the president have agreed to work with the faculty over the summer as much as possible. And I think for those of you that aren't on campus, it really is important for you to get as much information as you can as those decisions are being made, so that they can be made in as informed a way as possible. So I thank you all for your attention, and I hope that you're able to contribute to this program.
Thank you, Paul. Professor Gilkey.
So I would like to read two more questions. The first one is, although we are not at the bargaining table, can the university make a strong statement to OUS how much we value our classified staff and that being as harsh as their stand now is to reevaluate their posture?
We have several ways to do that, and we will do that. We, oops, excuse me. We have the ability to discuss this in our, at our meetings before the board meetings next month, and we will carry that message forward as we have consistently throughout this year. Thank you.
And the next question is, why are auxiliaries unable to balance their own budgets, like the colleges and athletics, if they do not receive general fund dollars either?
Basically, the auxiliaries aren't facing rescissions. And so there, that's a, it's a central pool. It's something we could have done another way. We felt that this was the way that would allow auxiliary staff to participate in the central administration pool of the cut that we're going through. Again, it's, it was something that was done very quickly. I'm not sure that I see that another way would have been better, but as we look forward to anything that might have to be done in the next biennium, and that's not at all clear yet, we're certainly open to discussing a different way to do that.
Next question. Ladies and gentlemen, we have just about nine minutes left, at least by my accounting. So if you have questions, please do get them to people as rapidly as possible. And again, we will do our best to answer questions in some blog-type format after that. Yes, please.
My name is Stephanie Denby. I've been here 14 years. I work at the University Health Center. I am classified staff. I'm not here to add to all the valid statements about how we've taken it on the chin through pay freezes and pay cuts. All that's true. I'm here to inform you about something that is not bargainable to part-time classified. The Public Employee Benefit Board decided several years ago that part-time staff doesn't count for the same level of health care. We only get 50% of coverage. Yes, we have fully paid premiums, which infuriates the public for some reason. Our coverage is only 50%. So think about it, UOAs and faculty who are 0.5 to 0.99 FTE. What if your coverage was cut to 50%? You don't have the choice of taking your premium and applying it to the better coverage. You don't have that option. The so-called Public Employee Benefit Board, I have another word for them, but that's what they're called officially, does not give us the option. Besides the fact that we now have classified staff on food stamps, in Section 8 housing, we now have them in total health care failure and financial failure due to only 50% health care coverage. So when you make your decisions on how you're going to help this campus, please keep in mind those of us that are your colleagues, your coworkers, that contribute to the running of this campus, and we are humans too. As they say historically, if you prick us, do we not bleed? Do we not feel pain? But we don't have the same level of coverage to pay for that pain and for that bleeding, and we're bleeding. Please consider us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two questions. One of them has been from our colleagues in Portland to which this forum is being broadcast, and that is, is this an opportunity to do something tougher, but perhaps more significant, to rethink the university and make vertical cuts?
Let me give a visceral reaction, which is, no. We did all the vertical cuts that we thought the university could take. This was not on my watch, but during the horrific period following the enactment of Measure 5 and the first of its three successive biennia of cutbacks. The university, in the view of those who were part of that very painful process at that point, concluded that to make any more vertical cuts would be to destroy the notion that we really were a comprehensive research university, and that that really would be untenable, based upon the fact that the university cut entire schools and colleges at that point and major parts of other ones. That's a very brutal process that would not, in my view, result in the kinds of savings that are relevant anyway to dealing with this crisis. That's my personal view. The view of another will take the place of my view in about eight weeks.
Let me add that there are some scenarios for the next biennium that would force us into those conversations. At this point, we don't believe those are the most likely scenarios. And as President Frunmeyer said, we do not want to get into those discussions unless we're very serious about it, because I've seen them on other campuses, and I've heard the stories of what happened here in Measure 5, and they create divisions that will not heal for generations. So if we can avoid those, we're lucky in the sense that we have already defined what we're about. There are some places that have decided to be everything and need to go through that refining process about what is unique to their campus. We've already done that, and it's expressed very well in the academic plan. So I don't believe that there is an opportunity here, it's only, it's only an opportunity for pain, basically.
And I have another question from within this room. How is the university planning to deal with the low morale and resentment very clearly expressed here today?
I think one of the major ways that we can deal with all of these issues is to meet as a community and to talk them through. No one likes the choices that we face. These are not our idea of how we best want to serve students and future generations by having either divisions within us or misperceptions or misunderstandings. And so I, at least to the extent that we can do it, the more we have lines of communication open, the better.
Let me just add to that, that part of the reason for the low morale is, things are tough. And this is not going to be a time, I think, that there's anything we're going to do that's going to make people like what's going on out there. But I hope that people will take stock of some of the alternatives happening at other campuses across the country and at other businesses in the state of Oregon where there are thousands of people that have been laid off, and campuses where faculty have been terminated and staff have been terminated. Furloughs at Arizona State, for example, are three weeks for anyone in the upper faculty and administration. So while we do have some real challenges, and there are reasons for people not to be giddy about the situation we're in, it could be worse. And I think it's important that we communicate, as President Frunmeyer said, what we're doing, what's happening in other places, and get through this. Remember, we said at the last one, our core objective is to get through this with our core competency intact. And we need one or two more good breaks, but if we get them, we're going to come through this well if we all stick together. The real, the real damage will come if we divide our community, if we lose part of what we are, if we lose a chunk of the staff, to the extent that we won't be able to function as the University of Oregon at the end of this three- or four-year period. But I think we're in, we're in pretty good shape right now if we stick together to achieve what we need to.
One out of eight of our fellow citizens in this state does not have a job right now. That's what the headline means. That's how it translates. One out of nine mortgages has been foreclosed in this nation. It is a very difficult time for a lot of people, and we're all fortunate to have the capacity not only to have work that is our worth, but work that has a value beyond our lives. That's what a university is about. And I want to thank all of you who continually make that your mission irrespective of the clouds of uncertainty that surround our economic circumstances.
I'm Helga Wood, and I work in architecture. I'm really impressed with the idea of one day mandatory for all faculty, staff, and upper administration, whatever. It seems if you look at all the concerns of people right now, the kinds of things that you're talking about, solidarity, morale, everything, that that kind of solves a lot of the questions. I'm wondering if it's too late to consider that kind of an option? It seems like it also would take care of the budget shortfall pretty, almost completely. I don't know the exact figures, but...
Thank you.
I would just say that I completely agree with you, and I have been advocating that at this point, we cannot find a legal way to do it. That's simply the bottom line. And we've looked at a number of different models. And the governor and the chancellor are both very supportive of that notion and are looking at various models, and we cannot find a legal way to do it.
Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question of President Frunmeyer? Last year, you got a raise of $150,000. And as I understand it, the furlough will cost you personally somewhere in the range of $5,000 to $10,000. And I'd like you to speak about whether you think the extent of your personal sacrifice is comparable to the sacrifices that you're asking the faculty and will soon be asking the classified staff to make. Thank you.
I don't think it's appropriate for me to speak to personal circumstances beyond that that has been expressed. Thank you for your question. Ladies and gentlemen, I think we have reached that hour. Again, may I say how much we appreciate the attendance of everyone and the concerns that you've expressed. We'll answer everything that we can through broader circumstances. Thank you very much.
Good night.